All right, I'll call this meeting the order of the APCD. And, uh, may I put the role of...
Supervisor Bennett, Supervisor Foy, Supervisor Long, Mayor Morgan, Supervisor Parks, Councilmember Rameed, Councilmember Sharkey, Mayor Washburn, Supervisor Saragosa, Councilmember Brennan.
Present. Okay, we do have a quorum. All right, we will all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item four is the minutes of the meeting from September 13th.
With your approval.
Sir.
Okay, motion sent. Any opposition or changes? Seen none, passage unanimously. Item five, anybody want to change anything on the agenda? Seen that, we'll let it stand. Board comments, item six. Okay, we'll save that for the items, and we'll move to our regular agenda. Item seven, approval of authorization for the Air Pollution Control Officer to sign a memorandum of agreement.
Chair Brennan, members of the board, I'm Mike Vegas, Air Pollution Control Officer. The California Emissions Estimator Model, or Cal-- this is for the next item. Slide this is. The California Emission Estimator Model, or CalEeMod, is designed and developed by the South Coast Air Quality Management District along with assistance from several other districts throughout the state. It's a uniform modeling platform designed to estimate both criteria pollutant emissions and greenhouse gases from a variety of different land use development projects such as residential, commercial, and mixed use. The model is suitable for use by California Air Resources Board and air district staff, environmental consultants, county and city land use planners, metropolitan planning organization, and transit agencies, and developers as they seek to comply with the requirements of AB 32, SB 375, and the California Environmental Quality Act. Because the model is not envisioned to be static, but one that will be upgraded over time, several districts, including ours, will be contributing funds for future upgrades to this model. One of the goals of the initiative for this model was to have a single model in use in California for this purpose, and to provide it at no cost to any interested party or agency. In order to facilitate this goal, all the local air pollution control districts that are going to be providing funding for the model have determined that it's in everyone's best interest to turn over ownership of the model to the California Air Pollution Control Officers Association. And I just want to give you a little background on why this happened. The previous model was known as Urbomis. And what happened was, it had been upgraded several times, and there was a dispute over ownership between the South Coast District, well, all of the air districts, and the people actually doing the upgrades. South Coast entered into lengthy litigation with those consultants, and finally, they closed that out. But in the meantime, they developed this replacement model, not knowing what the outcome of the litigation is. What we're doing here is basically taking a position early on so we can avoid any of these conflicts later on down the road. This assignment of ownership would include all of the district's rights in copyright, trademark, trade secret, and intellectual property, assigning those over to CAPCOA. Therefore, staff recommends that you authorize me to sign the attached MOA. And just to let you know, this is really kind of segues into the next item we're going to have before your board, because this is how you're going to actually estimate those emissions from future development projects before you start looking at the SEQA issues, et cetera.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions on action on the Senate?
With your approval.
Okay. Second by Supervisor Saragosa. Any opposition to the unanimous vote? Okay, seen that.
I'm sorry, this is the summary of the Greenhouse Gas Emissions Plan?
No, this is coming up. This is just the, uh, this is, you know, leading into that, so. Okay, seen no opposition, the motion carries unanimously. Move to item eight. Mr. Thomas.
Good morning, Chuck Thomas with the Planning Division of the APCD. This item, Greenhouse Gas Threshold Options for Ventura County, is a, is a result of Supervisor Parks' request in September, at the September Board Meeting, to get an overview of what's going on with greenhouse gas thresholds for SEQA purposes. So, we spent about the last month putting together the report that you have before you, and it's kind of an overview, and I'm here to give you a bit of an overview of the overview. This slide presentation, um, I gave myself a budget of 10 slides to keep it short, but I didn't quite make it. I've got 13, but it's still pretty, pretty short. Let's see, there we go. So, why? So, why are we talking about greenhouse gas threshold for SEQA purposes? Well, first of all, it's because SEQA requires that greenhouse gases emissions be addressed by, be addressed in environmental documents. And that's an outgrowth, actually, of SB 97, which mandated that, that greenhouse gases be addressed by SEQA. But beyond that, having thresholds for SEQA analyses would provide consistency across, hopefully, the county and the region as to the approach of how to, how to address greenhouse gases in environmental documents. In other words, if, it'd be good if Ventura did it the same way as Oxnard, did it the same way as Thousand Oaks, and so forth. And beyond that, lead agencies, see, the county of Ventura, the cities in the county, and cities across the state have been looking to their air districts for guidance on how to do this, how to address greenhouse gases in their SEQA analyses. So, what are the options? Well, most of the options come out of CAPCOA's document that was put together in 2007, adopted in 2008, that lays out possible options. The various districts under the CAPCOA umbrella got together and put out this, this large document that addresses the issue and lays out various options. And it's kind of become, lack of a better term, it's become the bible that the air districts are using to develop greenhouse gas thresholds. Under, under SEQA for greenhouse gases, there are basically three, three general approaches. One is no threshold. Under SEQA, you do not need to have a threshold, it's not mandated. And there's at least a number of agencies who have taken that approach. But even though you don't have a threshold, you still need to address greenhouse gases in environmental documents. The downside is you probably have a lot of more SEQA challenges, and you would have to, and you would have, um, a large number of projects would require EIRs, even for small The second approach is a zero threshold. Under a zero threshold, basically, all net increases in emissions would be significant. And again, you'd have a large number of projects requiring EIRs for no other reason than your greenhouse gases. That you may not have it for traffic, you may not have it for water, you may not have it for any other air quality issue, or housing, or anything else, but just greenhouse gases. And you probably also have more SEQA challenges by both proponents and opponents of the projects. Then you get to the non-zero approach, which is the most common approach for most environmental issues. Basically, what you'd have is you'd have a certain threshold, a certain value, above which is significant, below which you're not. And it would establish a large body of very small projects that would, that would not be significant, would not require further environmental analyses, such as single-family custom homes and things of that sort. And it would reduce the administrative burden of preparing a lot of environmental documents that you normally wouldn't have to have. And as I say, this is the most common approach used by many agencies for many different environmental issues. Now, for greenhouse gases, there are basically two non-zero approaches, sub-approaches, if you will. The first one is called the AB 32 Executive Order S 305 objectives. In other words, there are four options under this, all, all of which would mandate that projects have to meet a certain emission, greenhouse gas emission reduction consistent with AB 32. For example, the first one would meet the AB 32 overall emission reductions of 29, 30%. Then, the second option would be that all new projects have to go 50% beyond that. And the third option, uh, actually, I don't remember what the third option is right now. And the fourth option would be a regional reduction based on AB 32. In other words, our regional reduction, I believe, under SCAG's, um, SCS would be 8% per capita. In other words, each project would have to demonstrate that their emissions would be 8% per capita below business as usual.
I think that other one was by economic sector.
By economic sector, that's correct. In other words, market sector, transportation, electricity, so on and so forth. Now, under, now the, the next option is the tiered approach, which also is called being a layered or stepped approach where you have to meet certain cut points to be insignificant or not. And there are seven CAPCOA, in the CAPCOA document, and there are three other options beyond that that other people have thought of over, over the time. Whoops, going back. This is a conceptual tiered approach, just for illustration purposes, where the first cloud, or the first tier would be any applicable SEQA exemptions, such as the categorical exemptions. If you meet a categorical exemption, you're out. If not, then you go down to the next tier, which might be, in this illustration at least, consistency with a greenhouse gas plan, such as AB 32, or, or SCAG's SCS. If, if your project can be consistent with that, can be shown consistent with that, you're out. If not, you can drop down to the next tier, which would be one or more additional thresholds, probably numeric thresholds. And if you meet those, you're out. If you don't, then you're, you're into the EIR mitigation. So, under the tiered approach, the various air districts who are developing thresholds are basically looking at this, this group, this group of seven. And I'll touch on each one of them in subsequent slides here. Uh, I think I've already kind of done the first one. As I said, the first one is the GHG Reduction Plan, which would be a general plan or area plan consistent with AB 32. If your area has such a plan, and the project can be shown consistent with that plan, then you're not significant. The next one is an efficiency metric, which is kind of hard to explain, but basically what it is, uh, at least in the Bay, the Bay Area has adopted the efficiency metric, other air districts are looking at it. In the Bay Area, it's a project that can be shown that its service population, which would be, for, for a commercial project, it would be the employees would be the service population. For a residential project, it would be the, the number of residents, the new residents in the project. For a mixed use, it would be employees and residents. If your project can be shown to be, to meet a 4.6 metric ton per service population or per capita, then your project would be not significant. And that goes back to AB 32. And for a plan level at 6.6, now this is what the Bay Area has adopted, and other districts are looking at this particular efficiency metric as a threshold. The next one, and see, is even a little more difficult. It's called the bright line gap. San Luis is looking at this, other air districts are looking at it as well. It only looks at the land use sector of, of the California greenhouse gas emission inventory under AB 32. The red line is your projection of future emissions from the land use category, the emissions inventory, including projected emission controls for greenhouse gases. The green line is what, is the projection you need to meet AB 32 goals, and you're going to have a gap. And that gap is your threshold, it's a numeric threshold. I believe the Bay Area has adopted, has adopted this, it's 1,100 metric tons per year. San Luis Obispo Air District is looking at this, and I think they're at 1,200. And presumably, as time goes on, you'd have to look at this gap, and you would have to adjust it, because it's going to change over a number of years. This, developing this one is very, very resource and time intensive. Bay Area threw lots and lots of money at it. San Luis is trying to do it themselves. They're finally at the endpoint. They started in January, and they're finally at their number, and they plan to go into their board in January. And they hired a consultant. Hopefully, if we were to look at this in more detail, um, we'd do it after SCAG adopts their SCS, and hopefully, that would provide us with, uh, the data needed to help us do ours, rather than have to generate it from scratch. Then there is the quantitative market capture. It's kind of a weird name, but basically what it would do is it would be a numeric threshold set to capture 90% of the new greenhouse gas emissions from a project. We've looked at this in some detail, and for us, for residential projects, it's about 900 metric tons per year, and would capture about 33% of the new residential projects. For commercial, it's about 1,000 metric tons per year, and would capture 46% of the new commercial projects. South Coast is looking at this one. This is their prime one, that they've been looking at for quite some time. That's basically why we started looking at it. Their numbers are different because their emission inventory is different, or, I, I should say, the type of projects, the size of projects they have are different than ours, or their mix of projects. The next one, best performance standards, only one air district is looking at this, this is, well, they've, they've adopted, is San Joaquin. They don't have a threshold, they don't have a numeric threshold, they don't have, or really any other threshold. Basically, what they've said is they've looked at and said, "There's no scientific way that you can develop a numeric threshold for greenhouse gases, because it's a global issue." It's not a local issue, it's a global issue, and on a local issue, you cannot scientifically develop a meaningful numeric threshold. So, what they've said is, every project to be insignificant has to meet a list of what they define as best performance standards, such as energy efficiency standards, for example. If you can go down the list and check off your project as meeting these standards, you're not significant. If you can't do that, or you don't want to do that, then you have to quantify your emissions and show that your project has met the emission reduction goals of AB 32. You have to demonstrate it. You have to put into your project a certain set of measures, you have to quantify the emission reduction from those measures, and show that you've met the emission reductions called for by AB 32. Only, San Joaquin's the only air district that's, has adopted this to address SEQA in their environmental documents for the San Joaquin area. No other air district is looking at this, at it this time, because the Attorney General has numerous problems with this approach. Basically, they don't believe that it would meet SEQA standards. Then the final one. It's a criteria pollutant approach, where what, all you do is, for example, our criteria pollutant SEQA threshold for Roag and NOx is 25 pounds per day. So, you look at that, you run your projects, you see what your projects would generate greenhouse gases at 20, if they generate, also generate 25 pounds per day of Roag or So, in our example here, for residential project, a residential project in Ventura County that generates 20, 25 pounds per day of NOx would be a project of, of about 207 dwelling units. And that would generate 3,495 metric tons of carbon biox, carbon dioxide. So, for residential projects, the greenhouse gas threshold would be 34, 3,495 metric tons of CO2. And, and the same thing for general office, and for shopping centers, and so on, and so forth. The advantage of this is that nothing would be significant for greenhouse gases only. It would also be significant for Roag or NOx as well. So, you wouldn't have EIRs just for greenhouse gases.
Could I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Um, you were able to correlate what we presently do with pollutants and do it for greenhouse gas emissions?
Right.
And isn't that primarily for, um, mobile sources?
Right. What we're talking here-
Would it not include stationary source, uh?
No.
Okay.
What these thresholds are looking at are for development projects, shopping centers, residences, and the like, office buildings, not for stationary sources.
And all of these, some of them do actually consider the stationary source in the greenhouse gas emissions, is that correct?
Not, not-
They're all, they're all just trips?
They're all just trips.
Okay.
And not, well, not just trips, it's the electricity that those, um, projects would use, and the greenhouse gas emissions associated with that, water, and so forth, but not the stationary source emissions.
Okay, so, um, the one that you just recommend, or just described, does that include the electricity use, other things other than mobile?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it's, that's what the CalEmod program does. The, the old program that Mike mentioned, the Urbomis program, was just the vehicle trips. The CalEmod program takes into account the, the vehicle trips and everything else, the, the greenhouse gases associated with getting the water to the project, the greenhouse gas emissions associated with electricity generation, and so on and so forth. But when you talk about stationary sources, that has a particular meaning to us. It's, stationary sources are sources subject to APCD permit authority, and not SEQA.
Well, I've got you on that, and you were, and as I understand the report, you're saying those are not discretionary permits, so they're not, um, part of this equation. Uh, at least that, that's what your report said. And then my question on that would be, um, if you look at, like, a, a Peker plant or something like that, that's being considered now, it might be a stationary source of pollutants, but I would think that would be an example of something that isn't a ministerial project.
Uh, stationary sources and greenhouse gases are a whole different critter.
Okay.
So, that needs to be looked at separately. I don't know if, uh, Mr. Quong has anything to add?
Yeah, the only thing I would add, Mr. Thomas, is that, um, this whole question of greenhouse gas thresholds for stationary sources is an ongoing debate within the air pollution community here in California. There are, some of the larger air districts are choosing to go with a straight 10,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent as a threshold of significance, but even at that, those, those standards are sometimes seen as interim, and there's yet to be a board, at least in Southern California, that has adopted a, a threshold of significance for stationary source, um, stationary sources and greenhouse gas emissions. This, it's an ongoing thing, and, uh, Mr. Thomas and Mr. Vegas rightly pointed out that CalEmod technical advance is what has been awaited for up till now, and that really needs to be run on numerous projects to determine what that correct threshold is.
Well, I'm glad to see that you're looking beyond just the mobile sources then, despite this issue on a particular, uh, stationary sources, but looking at the, trying to look at the project's total greenhouse gas emissions. And I know that there are, you know, as you say, there's, there's many ways of looking at it. I'll let you complete your presentation.
Okay. There's just a, two or three, a couple more after this. Okay, this slide kind of summarizes which air districts are developing greenhouse gas threshold for development projects and who's doing what. As you can see, at the, the top line, the, the greenhouse gas reduction plan, everybody's looking at that as, if you remember back to the, uh, the cloud slide, that would be the second tier under applicable exemptions. So, everybody's looking at those, including us. Then you drop down to the efficiency metric. Everybody but San Joaquin is looking at it, or has adopted it. Drop down to the bright line gap, uh, there's fewer, um, that are looking at it, basically because it's, um, it's very, uh, time and resource intensive. And I should say, on the, on the bright line, or on the efficiency metric, Sacramento, I forgot to mention this, but Sacramento was looking at it until recently, and they've dropped it. One reason why they, they dropped the efficiency metric from consideration is because no, they can't find a project that would meet it. Everything under that threshold in their area would be significant, can't meet 4.6 metric tons per capita. So, when we learned that, we, we looked at it here as well, and for residential projects, no residential project could meet it in Ventura County. It's mostly, um, applicable to mixed use, and if you look at the Bay Area, it's kind of perfect for the Bay Area, because they have a lot of mixed use, a lot of public transit, that sort of thing. The bright line gap, uh, Sacramento is looking at that one as well, and they've dropped that from consideration as well, because they just don't have the financial resources to develop it.
If I can just jump in real quick-
Sure.
-on the efficiency measure, it's also important to note that the Bay Area, who was the first one to adopt the efficiency measures, is undergoing litigation right now. It's being challenged on, of all things, SEQA grounds, that the Bay Area did not analyze the SEQA impacts of the use of this threshold on land use development patterns and how that affected that. So, know that that litigation is ongoing. I spoke to some colleagues up in the Bay Area recently, and that is, that is a, uh, ongoing matter.
If I might ask, who's challenging that, do you know?
I believe it is a consortium of land use developers, including the BIA.
I think it's under the BIA umbrella, is from what I recall. And just, just to add to that a bit, um, they adopted their greenhouse gas thresholds as a regulation, which generally, regu, new regulations are subject to SEQA. They don't, they don't say in their guidelines or in their, the report, that it, that their guideline, their greenhouse gas thresholds are advisory until page 19 of Appendix- guideline, their greenhouse gas thresholds are advisory until page 19 of Appendix C. You read, you read their report, you read their documents, and it's presented as a regulation, not as an advisory threshold. Which brings me to a good point here, is in Ventura County and elsewhere, air districts have, have put forth CEQA thresholds for air quality issues as advisory, not as regulations. Ours in particular, we've bent over backwards to say that our greenhouse, our air quality thresholds that we've had since 1980 are advisory, and they are not regulations. Local agencies can, are free to use ours or not. Most lead agencies in Ventura County do use our thresholds for GR, for ROG and NOx, ozone precursors, and so forth. There's only one city, Simi Valley, that has used a different threshold for ozone precursors. And what they're, they're using is an earlier recommendation from us, 13.7 tons per year. They, they chose to stick with our older threshold than our 20 new, our, our 20 current 25 pounds per day threshold. So there, so all the agencies in the county, except Simi, use our current ozone precursor thresholds. We present them as advisory. Lead agencies can use them or not, but most do. We intend our greenhouse gas thresholds to be advisory as well. And other air districts, except for the Bay Area, are also presenting theirs as advisory. So then you get down to market capture. It's basically us and South Coast. And then you go down to best performance standards, San Joaquin, and you go down to the criteria pollutant. Oh, I forgot the cr, um, oh, you go, okay, drop down to criteria pollutant, there's one district that is now looking at that, and that's, again, only reason, that's Monterey. They were looking at efficiency metric, and they were looking at bright line gap, and I'm not really clear on why, but just recently, they do the criteria pollutant, they're looking at that as theirs. And one, one more slide. What are, what are our thoughts at the staff level? We believe that regional consistency of greenhouse gas thresholds is important. And when I say regional consistency, I'm talking about consistency in Ventura County with the South Coast and the SCAG region. Because we're all basically part of this one, one giant region, and it would be, we think it would be a good idea to be consistent throughout this region, because we get the same type of projects. Our projects tend to be a lot smaller in many ways than what they get elsewhere in the SCAG region. But because it's a global issue, it's not a regional or a local issue, we think being consistent within the SCAG region is probably a good idea because it provides a leveled playing field for everybody. We believe a tiered approach with our central bright line gap or bright line threshold, because bright line thresholds are easy for people to understand. You're either above it or you're below it, versus something like performance standards, which you, there's some discretion, you have to, there's more discretion, some more judgment calls whether your project or whether your project, the project you're considering meets those, those standards or not. And then we intend, at least at this point, to proceed with developing at least interim thresholds, with the eye toward perhaps modifying, revising them once South Coast has adopted theirs. The South Coast has been working on thresholds for at least two or three years. They have stalled out, they haven't done anything in the last year, and we're not quite sure when they're going to restart their effort. When you, when you ask them what their, what their intent is or why they're not working, they say, we have more pressing issues to, to address, and we will get back to them. They never really tell us when. So rather than sitting around waiting for South Coast, we think we should, at this point, continue developing ours, and with the idea of perhaps having to revise them at some later date if we want to be consistent with, with theirs in the future. So, am I done? Uh, yeah, pretty much, unless you have any further questions or comments.
Comments, questions?
Well, I'd like, if you would, to send the PowerPoint forward electronically.
Oh, sure.
It was very good in, in walking us through it and understanding what the landscape has and the complexities of the question. I guess I look at all of this to say, as we, as we do in our Carol Moyer program, a cost benefit ratio. Where does that fall into any of this?
Uh, cost benefit, no, this, we hadn't thought about doing any cost benefit ratio. As I said, these are advisory.
Yeah, I understand.
Um, we haven't done it in the past. We've adopted CEQA thresholds for criteria pollutants, and that is something that we haven't done. If it's your board desire for us to do that, we can certainly look into it. Not quite sure how we would, but-
I'm not either.
Okay.
I, I don't have a answer to my own question, I guess I-
I, I think one of our goals would be to make sure that the obviously smaller projects aren't forced into doing environmental impact reports solely because of greenhouse gas emissions.
No.
I think that would be, kind of meet what you're getting at.
Okay, okay.
Having sat on the ARTAC, that helped form the, the way that we would set targets, I was able to, not being a, not, not, not being an expert, but being with all these experts really opened my eyes on a lot of the issues. And, and my emphasis on that board was trying to make it something understandable so that we would be able to, sitting here as a board, for example, have an idea of how best to meet the greenhouse gas emission requirements of the law. And in doing that, we decided to look at it as a per capita target, so that each individual takes some ownership into it. And then we just said that it should be a percentage reduction over all, over what is required. And so with that in mind, I, I look at the many options that you've laid out and really appreciate the work on this, and I know it is very extensive and very illuminating. But looking at it with that kind of, the same lens as we did at ARTAC, I, two of them kind of popped out at me, and, and one is probably just, just the first one that was mentioned on, in your list, which is looking at, just saying projects must reduce greenhouse gas emissions compared to the business as usual, either the 2020 target or the 2050 target, instead of trying to break it down by sector or, you know, some of this, when you talk about cost benefit analysis, some of this is just going to be easier to do for our agency than it would be to, than others. So I, that's what I was kind of thinking about. Not only do we not want to end up in a situation where you have little projects having to do EIRs, we also don't want to end up in such a cumbersome thing that it's time intensive and complicated and not understandable. And I think that what we can do towards making it understandable is to have something set that is clear in those EIRs of what the threshold is, that can be seen. And then also, I think it would be beneficial to have some guidelines to help the cities to calculate, help the consultants to calculate. And also, one of the emphasis that I appreciated with the ARTAC was looking at best management practices. So not only are they going to, you know, are the consultants putting together EIRs, understand, you know, what it is we're looking for, but also being able to have a set of mitigation require, recommendations that they could use, and knowing that they'll get some good bang for their buck. So it, that, I think, is just a, a separate thing, a kind of a guideline book to assist in how to calculate it and, and what will reduce greenhouse gas emissions that they may want to incorporate into EIRs. I think that'd be a big benefit and be helpful to the, the cities and county when we're, when we're looking at mitigation measures. Also, the emphasis on ARTAC was that the goals, the targets be ambitious and achievable. So I, I also want to make sure that we kind of carry that on. And right now, because of the sluggish economy, we're probably all just desirable of just do whatever's achievable and move on. But I think we also want to keep an eye out for being ambitious, it can be achievable if everybody needs, and that, that's where I'm at, everyone does their share. I'm glad that not only mobile emissions are looked at, but also the stationary, so we can look at the full scope. And there are some pretty simple things you can do to reduce greenhouse gas emissions over what is commonly used. So I, I'm thinking that as a board, it's pretty complex to sit here and make any kind of recommendation. I appreciate staff's going to go back and, and look at doing something, because otherwise we could be delayed for years, and I don't want that to be the case. I, I want Ventura County to be proactive, and we can be, and it isn't too much effort, I think, on the part of some of these development projects. And with that, I was thinking maybe the best approach would be to form a subcommittee to work with staff so that we can get not only the technical look, but also kind of a policy look, and maybe have something that is more digestible up here when all is said and done. So that, that's where I'd go on that, and I'd ask your, your opinion on that, and obviously the rest of the board.
And the members that aren't here would be on that committee?
No, I, I-
Joking, obviously, but if thoughts on, on staffing or putting together a subcommittee?
I think that's workable. I think that would be, I mean, if it's, it could be the standing committee, it could be a different subcommittee of, you know, up to four.
Okay, we can poll the membership members and see. Board's thoughts on a subcommittee?
Yeah.
Maybe vet it a little bit more, bring it out, give some direction. Obviously not whatever this board would need to make some major decisions on.
I think there's more, more staff work maybe that needs to be done here. I don't think we're ready for a committee, I'm not sure what the, what the, what the work would be. It looks like staff's up on this, keeping track of what's going on around the region. I mean, that's, you know, I, I think the consistency part of it is, is critical. And so it's not that we're, you know, that we're forging ahead of everybody else, but everybody's trying to move in concert, and I think staff is in a good position to be, be aware of that. You know what's going on around the region.
Yeah, we, we, we work with, with a, a subcommittee of CAPCOA on this issue. We meet with them at least once a month to talk about the issue, what's going on, what, what, what people are doing, what problems they're having, and so on and so forth. So we're, we're pretty well engaged in the issue for quite some time now, so.
Well, I, I do appreciate the fact that you are, like I said, looking at moving forward and not waiting for SCAG, not SCAG, AQMD. And having, on that ARTAC, I worked probably closest with Barry Wallerstein, their general manager, so I, you know, I'd be, I know that they have so much to, to deal with out there, and I, I can see where this is just looked at as a, a big headache, you know? But he, he actually came up along with those best management measures, and they have actually a whole list that they've put together. So they, they've done a lot of work, it just may be hard to get it through their board, and that might be what the, the stalling point is.
I have nothing further to say. Are we doing the subcommittee or?
Yeah, I think we'll, let me just see where we go on this. I would just, number one, I wanted to say I appreciate the work of bringing this to us. Certainly vetting it with us now, kind of the first blush, it's nice that this is recorded and it's on streaming, so that folks can go back and perhaps use this as a, as a workshop idea, at least to get familiar with it themselves. My thoughts are, have we posted like the PowerPoint or some of the information? Is there a little section on APCD website that maybe talks about this specifically so they can keep it, like when you meet on a monthly basis, maybe a summary of what that is, so that people want to educate themselves and at least get familiar with the, the, you know, the jargon, the bright line, gap, threshold, and all these, you know, I mean, that's, or the BLG, as, T, as it's probably affectionately known-
Yeah.
...in your group, but just those kind of, it's a whole new vernacular, I guess, and in some ways, maybe folks that want to educate themselves could take advantage of that, short of perhaps having a subcommittee start up. I'm just wondering, discussion on, what thoughts on the subcommittees?
I would think, I'd like, this is obviously still evolving, and perhaps have it come back to us again for further discussion after this is digested. And also, the standing committee is already a structured committee, so perhaps to, to take it to the next standing committee for further discussion and questions. I, at this point, I'm not sure even the questions to ask, and that's part of my struggle with it, so.
Mr. Chair. I, I think like that approach, you know, maybe having the standing committee be that committee, and working in those conditions.
Supervisor Parks?
And bring it back, of course, you know, for next, next meeting.
Well, you know, I'm already on probably 20 committees, so I'm happy not to be on a committee. So, and I'll be glad to just continue to, to look at it as it comes through.
Well, I want to thank you for all the work you're doing with SCAG. I mean, certainly, you're so familiar, well, probably have become comfortable with this whole new vernacular and where we're going. And obviously, we've got some catch up to do ourselves. So perhaps I do, the standing committee is maybe a place that we can vet that a little bit, and maybe we reach a, a point, maybe in a quarter or two, a quarter that says, hey, it's time maybe to bring this and set up a committee, and certainly, we'll do all our, we can to get caught up with Supervisor Parks on this. And I do want to thank staff for, this is a receive and file. One, okay?
Second.
And I see no objection, we'll just move along. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Okay, next item?
All right, the Political Reform Act of 1974 requires every local government agency to review our conflict of interest codes by any OLE, to make sure that it accurately identifies covered employees or if amendments are necessary. Consistent with our recent management reorganization, we're proposing to amend Exhibit A, the list of employees covered, to delete two reporting classifications that no longer exist, add four new reporting classifications, and reduce the number of positions from three to two in the supervising air quality engineer classification. That's all I have.
Okay. Looks very straightforward, any questions? Got a motion, second? Any objections to an unanimous vote? Seeing none, move to the next item, Mr. Vegas.
Attached to the board letter is the district's unaudited financial status report for fiscal year 10, 2010-11. Based on the unaudited results, this year's operations reported a net savings of just over $644,000, including deferred purchases, salary savings, and reduced operating costs. And I need to point out that the deferred purchases account for $146,000 of this, so in other words, we added approximately half a million dollars to the district's fund balance, which is quite good. When you compare the actual amounts to the budgeted numbers, our total realized revenue from operations were slightly over budgeted revenue due, due to additional revenue from fines and source test, observation fees. While the district's actual operating expenditures were well below adopted appropriations, and this was due to savings in salaries and benefits and services and supplies, we also deferred filling one vacant position, and we saw a reduction in the employer's share of retirement cost, and a decrease in various operational costs. They all contributed together to be a significant savings for the district. We will return to your board with a comprehensive annual financial report after our external auditors come in and complete their audit. Lastly, in this, the past fiscal year 2010-11, we received funds to administer our pass-through grants, and their report is separately in Attachment 4. And as you remember, these pass-through grants, including administration costs, have a corresponding revenue, so there's never in that savings, never- revenue, so there's never in that savings, never in that cost, and that's all I have. It's quite good news for the district.
Okay, well, that's, yeah, I mean, that's amazing. Staff managed to stay within the budget and reduced operating costs without impacting district programs. I think that speaks volumes to the hard work and everything. I know everybody's taken on a little bit extra, and, believe me, from this point, I'd say, speaking for the board, we do appreciate that on the part of staff. Thank you. Mike, you're always very consistent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue to go in that direction. Any objection to any, hold on, let's see, motion?
Steven Clark.
Okay, got a motion, second, and any objection to an unanimous yes vote? Seen none? We'll move to item 11. Cancel this, oh, this is, this, I know, I know, no, this, this can, yeah. Yeah. Everybody will make the motion on this one, and one last meeting, okay? Unanimous yes vote, I won't even look, I'm, soon. Item 12, application for state subvention funds, is a receive and file?
Receive and file.
Second, okay, no objection to unanimous yes votes? And then, item 13, is the minutes of the basin-wide air pollution control, receive and file?
Receive and file.
Okay, motion and second, unanimous yes vote? Thank you. We will adjourn the APCD till the New Year. Excuse me, and thank you for the reminder. We have public comment, is there any? I didn't see any cards in front of me, so I, great, seen none? We'll adjourn till the New Year.